And good evening and welcome to the April 26th meeting of the Murfreesboro School Board. We're glad to have you in attendance with us, and those of you that are watching on television, we're glad to have you watching there. At this time, we were going to stand as we have Evy Riley from Overall Creek to lead us in our pledge, followed then by our motto of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And there are our motto of silence. All right, board members, you have a copy of the agenda in front of you, and you've had a copy for several days, so I'd like to have a motion, please, to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. King. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Dr. Gilbert, communications.
Yes, good evening, board.
Good evening.
Welcome. Welcome. Several communications. Mitchell Nelson teachers, Michelle Slusher and David Lockett were presenters at the Science Education for Students with Disabilities Conference in Nashville during spring break. And also, they have presented in MTSU's Play Symposium on April the 9th, along with Mitchell Nelson teacher Rosalyn Brown. Murfreesboro City Schools would like to thank the Murfreesboro Lionesses Club for their $200 donation to the Backpack Program. John Pittard was the recipient of United Days of Action, United Way Days of Action Program. A crew of volunteer workers from Middle Tennessee Electric Membership Corporation came to John Pittard, and they did approximately two and a half hours of work outside the school, weeding the front flower beds, so thank you to MTEMC. Congratulations to Kason Lane Academy's PTO. Their father-daughter dance was a huge success and raised $1,300 for St. Jude's. Mitchell Nelson would like to thank MTSU's College of Behavioral and Health Sciences, and specifically Claire Cook's class, for partnering with them to offer sixth graders and their parents information about middle school. Thanks also to Pizza Inn on New Salem Highway for donating pizzas for the event. Congratulations to Mitchell Nelson's first grade teacher, Rachel Prater, who also is our K-3 Teacher of the Year at Mitchell Nelson, and her recycling club, who came in second place for the Earth Day video at Murfreesboro's Earth Day celebration. Congratulations to John Pittard's front office person, Casey Beasley, for being selected as this year's Rutherford County DCS Hero. Of the six finalists representing many professions, Ms. Beasley was the only nominee from a school, and this recognition goes to people who go the extra mile and who are especially supportive to DCS workers in helping to keep children safe. Congratulations to gifted coordinator, Dr. Stacy Burt. Dr. Burt's proposal, "Fare thee well, Felicia," a creative approach to educating two, well, twice exceptional, two E students, has been accepted for presentation at the National Association for Gifted Children. Black Fox would like to thank Howard and Sally Wall for their donation of a new American flag to the school. And also, I'm pleased to announce the Tendancy Department of Health has let us know that we will be receiving a Project Diabetes grant. There were 20 grants that were given. There were eight of those 20 that were given to school districts, and these will provide, I believe it's five greenhouses over the next three years, and also full-time farmer educator and raise beds at all of our schools. We had a tremendously successful soccer jamboree on last Friday, so thank you, ESP, for your work with that. Several other announcements. We had a borough book battle on April the 14th, and Black Fox hosted that, and we had Black Fox, Reese Rogers Discovery School, Hobgins School, Mitchell Nelson, and Kason Lane participating. And your own Nancy Rainier was one of the judges, and how she did it, I will never know, because I would not want that job. We also had, we are starting tonight, as a matter of fact, we're starting online registration for our returning students, and so they will be registering online. We have kindergarten registration on May the 5th and the 6th. We have our volunteer appreciation lunch on Wednesday, the 4th. And we are continuing to have pre-K registration through May the 16th, so if they would contact the central office about that, anyone who's interested in registering their child for kindergarten. We have our Asian Culture Night coming up on May the 5th, that's Thursday, May the 5th, at Black Fox. We have our Science Olympiad coming up this Saturday. We will have several of our students who will be participating in that, and that will be at Pittard, and also on Saturday. We have at Scales our bike rodeo. And then, we will be having International Art Night at Bradley on May the 6th, I believe. So we have a lot of things that are going on between now and the end of school. And we are not having any snow days between now and then. Those are all the communications.
How do we register our kids online? We just go to the website?
Uh huh. Yes, you'll, there's information about that on the, on the website, and you should be getting information from your school. So there will be a period of time, that, that will be, I believe, about a, I believe about a three-week period. So you will, you will be getting information about that, but that's the first time, this will be the first time that we've tried that, so we're hoping it works very well.
Well, I was glad to help Howard and Sally decide what they wanted to do with their big flag, or a big flag, that's actually eight feet by 10 feet, and it looks great on that flagpole at Black Fox. It really does. Very nice. All right, consent items. Have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Rainier. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Action items.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, good evening, board. What you have before you tonight is the approval of a bid to do the construction at Bradley. Remember, we had this in our five-year plan as one of our projects, to improve the restroom facilities and intervention rooms at Bradley. The bid came in at $225,000, and the amount that's been approved was substantially higher than that, so we feel real good that these bids came in lower. Four companies bid on it. All four companies picked up the paperwork, so it was a, that's very good that all four actually placed a bid, that who picked up the paperwork. So we're recommending approval of this contract, since Johnson and Bailey did make sure that the contractor, which is Pride Concrete and Construction Company, that the contractor went through all of their screening processes, and they are recommending approval of this. And I know this is pending a final approval of the contract from Legal Department. Is that correct, Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Okay. So we're asking for approval pending final approval of the contract from the Legal Department for the amount of $225,000 for Pride Concrete and Construction Company to do the renovation work at Bradley Academy.
I notice there's a wide range there, going almost $100,000 difference between the top and the bottom.
Yes.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the contract?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Rainier. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. All in favor say aye.
I have a question.
I'm sorry. Excuse me.
That's okay. We had some earlier discussion, Mr. Anderson, regarding one particular bathroom, and would that price change whether it was left, I mean, whether it was renovated as a bathroom or an intervention room? Do you remember the discussion?
Yes, I do remember. The original proposal that we put out for bid was to do the renovation with taking that bathroom facility out. So if, if that's a change, we would have to go back to the table with it.
Well, there was a great deal of discussion, and I don't know that a consensus was reached. And I still have concerns about making the, our teachers walk so far to get to restroom facilities. I still think that, otherwise, they would have four intervention rooms, isn't that correct? They would have, or is it? If that was, if that was just renovated as a restroom for the teachers, which is...
Yes, they made that a larger intervention area there than what it, right now, it's, it's used for a small restroom, and it's used for copies and stuff like that, making copies and paper storage.
I understand. I still have concerns about that. Like, we had talked about that, you know, we can't pay our teachers everything we would like to pay them, but giving them an easily accessible restroom, I think, is relatively important. Now, maybe I'm the only one that thinks that way.
Mr. Barrett?
I went over and saw Ms. Ortiz. After we had that discussion, I went to the school, and she said they're going to have a locked, one of those stalls is going to be locked for the teachers. And she talked with all the teachers and said they were fine with that, so, but they'll have a dedicated stall there for the, you know, so it's not going to be too far away, and it's going to be right there, so.
Oh, yeah. And I appreciate you doing that, and I understand that, you know, I think it would be hard to tell your principal, "No, I'm not happy with your idea." I think that would be difficult. And I think it's hard to say, "Yeah, I'd like a restroom just for the adults," and that, you know, I mean, I, I think if I were a teacher there, I would like to be able to go to the restroom without the kids all right there. But that's just, you know, I, I understand that they are locked on space, there's not a great deal of space, and there's so much that they want to accomplish, and, and it's just competing goods. There's no bad there, it's just competing goods. And, but it's just, you know, I still have concerns. I, I do think it would be hard to tell your principal, though, that, you know, you'd like to have an adult ladies' room, or, or men's room, or whatever.
Ms. Smith?
I totally appreciate where you're coming from, and I did also go by, and I was concerned about it, and it, it actually seems like it'll work out fine with, with this, I mean, that's how I left, I went in with being a little negative about the issue, but I was persuaded differently, so it looked like a pretty good setup for me.
Well, I also went by, in fact, went by the next day after our board meeting, and when we discussed it, and got a tour and looked at it, because, of course, I'm somewhat familiar with the building, because I taught over there for a while, and then, after she explained to me what she had, and then I also talked to some of, of the teachers and the employees, and they were fine with, because evidently, they all had gotten together in their planning in part of this, so it was a consensus of opinion, I think, from what I understood. Ms. King?
Well, I make the fourth one that went. I printed off the two floor maps that we were given and told her, I said, "You can understand our confusion," I said, "'cause we were looking at this, you know, this is what we were thinking." I said, "It was kind of funny, we got real defensive, because we thought they were taking a bathroom away from a teacher, and we got defensive about that, going, 'How dare you,'" you know? That, we didn't even want that to happen, but yeah, I went too. And they, they explained how they wanted it laid out, and I was, "Okay, good." So, if you're comfortable with it?
Well, obviously, you all are comfortable. I still have concerns, but I'm sure that it will be fine in the long run.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Nay.
All right, thank you. All right, next item of business?
Okay, we've got some of the policy rewrites from the Tennessee School Board Association for your review tonight. The first policy...
Wait, whoa. Ms. Rainier's having...
I know that we're going to go through these, but I have a question that maybe will supersede. We have already contracted with TSBA to do this, is that correct?
Yes.
When we look at these, can we tweak them in some way, or do we take them just as they're written?
No, definitely, you can. They are your policies, you can change them to however you want. You can decide, "No, we don't want what you recommended, we liked what we had, we'll keep that version." You may, you know, "We are changing the formatting and the numbering system," but if you like the verbiage in the policy you currently have, it's your policy. You decide what you want.
I thought that would kind of set us in the right direction. I didn't know if we were going to approve the, all of them in bulk or not. Thank you.
Okay. And I was going to present each one individually, and then let you vote on each one individually, if that was the will of the board, to do it that way. And I believe Ms. Price has given you the TSB rewrite, and if there is a corresponding current adopted policy, she gave you that, correct? Everybody has that. Okay. So the first one you have before you is, the rewrite is numbered 1.100. It regards school board, school district, school board, legal status and authority. Its corresponding currently adopted policy is BO1, Board Member Authority. They are essentially identical, with the exception of the last paragraph in our current policy is not included. There is one global change to all of their, just their style of writing, that I would like to recommend the board do, because it just makes it easier over the years not to have to change things. They tend to always use the phrase "chairman," and they always use the pronouns, him/her. It's just easier when you're writing them to refer to chair, board, and instead of saying a, using pronouns just to use, you know, member, or employee, or director. And that, that's just a stylistic change or revision, that your current policies are written that way, and I would recommend that you continue that method.
I also noticed that through these policies from TSBA, they don't capitalize director of schools, or board, or any of the other positions.
And stylistically, y'all have always capitalized board, director, those terms in your policies. So that's up to you, if you want to continue that style format you had, but I just, before we get started, I just want to see what the board's desire was, if they wanted to continue that style through your policies.
I'm fine with that style, with the capitals and what you just said.
Okay.
How we have it now, and just transfer it. That's just me.
Okay, is that, is that everybody's consensus? I, I don't have a problem with the way TSBA has written it in their, whatever you want to call it. I think if, if we're going to adopt, of course, we can change their policy to suit us, but it would be very consistent with their board policy across the state. So I, I don't know, do you want, do you need, do you need to have a motion in that regard?
Well, if there's, if there's a difference of opinion, yes, y'all would need to decide, make, take a vote to decide how you want to handle the style issue first. I know that's a very minor thing, but over the years, y'all have had a female chair member, and you've had a male chair member, and it just is one less thing you have to revise every time the chair changes.
Like, in their line eight, you know, they say individual board member, including the chairman, so forth, and it's, it's in lowercase, so, I don't, we have a motion, which way you want to go?
Not at this point. I'll make one, though.
Well, okay.
I prefer the way that we've been handling it, with the capitalization of chair, capitalization of director of schools, city council, whatever else is in here that I, I know I've looked at several that had, had them lowercase. I think it shows more respect if we do it that way. Maybe not, maybe I'm just crazy, but it seems that way to me. And you said on this policy that the last paragraph was different. It isn't.
Let's, let's get, let's get your motion.
Okay, so my motion is, go with, go with the way we've been doing it, capitalizing and leaving off chair man, if, if need be. Just chair.
That's second motion. As far as the pronouns?
Him/her.
Do you want me to use names or pronouns?
Oh, names.
All right, now, clear that up for me.
On the, for instance, on the TSBA one, on line nine, specified by, "When the board by vote has delegated authority to," instead of him/her, it says "to the chair."
Yeah, and look at BO1, the next-to-last paragraph. That's, it's the same as that paragraph. Y'all just currently have it written, "including chair," and then "has delegated the authority to that member," instead of him or her. That's how your policy's currently...
Also, like line six, Board of Education, capital B, capital E, and then line 17, policy of the board, board is capitalized, "to make its members," which is small m, "system staff," small letters. And then you go to line 18, board again is capitalized, so I like the capital to indicate kind of certain people without naming people, because they could change.
Okay. So we have a motion by Ms. Rainier. Do we have a second?
Second.
She did.
Second, Ms. Smith. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay.
Okay, now moving to 1.100. With that, that stylistic revision, do you want to adopt TSBA's as written? The only difference between TSBA's recommended rewrite is that the last paragraph in your current policy is not included in theirs, otherwise, they're identical. The last paragraph in your current policy, BO1, says, "It shall be the policy of the board to make its members, the system staff, and the public aware that only the board has authority to take official action."
That is on the, on the TSBA as lines 10 and 11.
It is.
Uh huh. Please make any one paragraph.
Just not separate as different paragraphs. All right, Mr. Barrett?
Quick, quick question. So, I know it says board throughout, and then at one point, it says Board of Education. Is there, do we need to distinguish that, or put a parentheses, board, besides Board of Education, or? I didn't know if that, throughout the policies...
Yes.
Because it seems like they're using them interchangeably here, like board and board...
Board of Education and board.
On line four, it says Board of Education, and then throughout, it keeps saying board.
If you want to do that in this very first policy, so it sets the tone for the rest...
I would be fine with that, to spell it out, and then we can just shorten it to board throughout all the other policies, but that's just me.
Okay. Got a question, comment? Our, do we, do we vote on it?
I think they must have a different copy.
All right, Ms. Price had already made that addition to what you have before you. I was working from what TSBA actually sent.
Okay.
So she'd already added that sentence on there. TSBA's rewrite didn't have that line 10 and 11 on what they originally gave us.
Oh, okay.
So, do you...
So we ready for a motion to approve policy...
Yes.
BO1, which will now be 1100, or 1.100?
100. So, so moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Moves that we accept, adopt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. King, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? And there is none. All right, next policy.
All right, the next policy is, the policy recommended by TSBA is 1.101, role of the Board of Education. There is no corresponding current policy. This basically is setting out the board's role as it is set forth in state law.
Have a motion to accept policy 1.101?
I have some...
Let's get a motion, then we'll get discussion. Okay?
So moved.
All right, Ms. Smith, moves that we accept it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Rainier. Now, discussion?
So the role of the Board of Education, it's not exactly what I have always said. I've always said that it was, that we hired the director of schools, we were over budget, and, but, and what'd you say?
Policies.
And the policies? So is that how, I mean, I like the promotion thing on there, but that's, I didn't know. But also, I think that we should employ a director of schools online, under the policy oversight one, instead of the chief school administrator. Okay.
Okay, so you want to change where it says employ a chief school administrator to employ a director of school?
Correct. Like, in half, the way that we hear.
Okay.
Line six.
Okay, got that.
Would you want to make that is into kind of two different lines? You know, hire the director of schools?
I think so. I think that, I think you're right, because that is one of the biggest tasks, actually, that we have, is to hire the director of schools. I mean, it's stated, but I think that it should be broken out.
Yes, and make it first.
Okay, so how do you want, how are you recommending it to read?
Do we employ and supervise the director of schools? Who carries out the policies?
I don't know that we supervise.
Employ and review, maybe?
Couldn't it just be very, is this just a conversation? Can I just speak? I'm sorry.
Sure.
Couldn't it just be as simple as, number one, it might say director or something in bold print, as these others are, and just be as simple as, "The board will hire the director of schools." Period, number one. And then go into policy oversight, "shall regularly evaluate the effectiveness of its policies and their implementation." That could be number two.
I think hire and employ.
Yeah.
Hire and employ.
Hire and, A and D.
And employ.
And employ.
And employ, a director of school.
Yes.
I would also add evaluate there as well, because we evaluate yearly, the directors. I would also add in there, evaluate.
So, so number one could be director of schools. The board shall hire, employ, evaluate, a chief school administrator, who shall carry out its policy throughout the development, implementation, administrative procedures, which is basically parts of line six, all of seven, and parts of line eight. Bullet point number two would be policy oversight, which would be the board. Now we jump down to the bottom of line eight. The board shall regularly evaluate the effectiveness of its policies and their implementation.
That's great.
So basically, we're splitting this up into two, in a sense.
We are. But instead of chief school administrator, we wanted to say director of school.
Correct.
Okay. All right, let me make sure I've got this correct. You want to say, use number one, director in bold, and then say, "The board shall employ, shall hire and employ the director of schools..."
What, you want to say evaluate?
"...a director of schools, who, who shall carry out its policies through the development and implementation of administrative procedures." Period. Did you want...
Did you include the word evaluate?
Yeah.
And evaluate, okay.
Shall hire, employ, and evaluate.
And evaluate. Okay, got it.
What's the difference between hire and employ?
The difference is that she actually works...
I guess the first is the, yeah.
Act of hiring.
Got it. Okay, I've got it.
Got it?
Mm-hmm.
Good question.
All right, we have a motion to accept, as we have amended or changed, and we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? None. All right, next policy.
All right, the next policy is 1.102, and it regards board member legal status. This I actually have made some significant changes to, because it appears they just gave us a very generic policy that didn't follow the Murfreesboro City Code that spells out the requirements of a school, school board member for the city of Murfreesboro. So I've got this tracked revision that I want to pass around to everyone.
So what you're bringing to us, Kelly, is...
Okay, so the...
A recommendation from you in lieu of what we have already.
Yes, and it appears, I didn't realize that these had been revised some. What I've got is what came directly from TSBA, the tracked version that I've shown you. And so, this revision, I took out that part about from districts of substantial equal population, because that...
And I had already taken that out when we sent that to her, because I...
And I had already taken that out when we sent that to her, because when I read it, I knew.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
But the rest of it should be the same.
Okay.
There are quite a few typos in this that we want to.
Let's get the meat of it, and then we'll get, go back to the grammar part.
Okay, and the version I've got includes what's required by state law, the high school diploma or a GED, and then what's underlined in red and what I handed you, that's what's required under the Murfreesboro City Code. Those are the requirements under the city code. So I recommend that those be included in this, because they're under the city code.
Okay.
And a change I didn't make is no member of, instead of county legislative body, that should say City Council. And then nor any city government official. As opposed to county government official. I think they've taken that out of, unfortunately, so.
Taking out legislative body also there in line 10.
Right. Put in City Council.
City Council. Nor any other county governmental.
Any other city government official.
City.
And then 11, there's another county there, on line 11. It says County Board of Education.
Okay.
And that should be Murfreesboro City, shouldn't it?
Yeah, and I'll fix that.
Okay.
Okay, got that.
And line 10, such is just a typo?
Yes. There's a typo on line 19 that I'll fix.
Yeah.
Obey on, I like that word, obey on.
Back up to line five. It says, "Members of the Board shall be residents of and elected on," but it never tells you residents of, I'm assuming the city.
Residents of Murfreesboro?
Yeah, residents of Murfreesboro.
City of Murfreesboro.
City of Murfreesboro.
So you do see, like, line 19.
Yes, I've got that typo fixed.
Okay.
And the one in line 10.
Yes.
Okay.
So at this August election, the people that qualified did not have to label a party?
Mm-mm. You never have.
They did, when we ran on that special ballot.
Really?
You did?
Yes.
You did?
There was a lot of not supposed tos on that.
I think because it was such a surprise to everybody.
Yes, they did have, but we just, we both put independent. But yes, so that's why I was asking.
These are nonpartisan elections.
That's state law.
Yeah.
All right, you've seen the changes. We've made some changes. I do have a motion to accept policy 1.102 as amended.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. King. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition, and there is none. All right, 1103.
Okay, 1103. This is another one that there is not a corresponding current policy, and the, this is up to y'all to decide. This is just a policy that's not really required by state law. It is something that apparently the Tennessee School Board Association recommends. The only item that raised a question to me that I wanted to point out is in line six, it indicates that when you do your self-evaluation, that there will be no other items on the agenda. I think in the past, y'all have done it while other items were on the agenda, so I'll, you know, defer to the Board as to how you would like to handle that.
Have we ever done this stuff, not all around self-evaluate?
Y'all haven't?
I know that Mary Wade did all the paperwork for us to be a TSBA Board of Distinction, and I think there had to be somewhat of an evaluation then. And I know in order to do that, or to apply for that status, but when I asked about it, when we no longer had attained that status, they said it had to be when all the members of the Board attended this, 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 and this. And so therefore, we didn't qualify, because not everyone went to all these things. So I don't know. Ms. Phillips, you're the expert.
I don't know, but we have done written evaluations in the past, is what we've stuck to. Why, it's echoing there. And that, you know, I like that, because it makes you think and gives you a chance to, you know, cogitate about it, and no one can get, and no one gets defensive, or their feelings heard, or things like that, so it's.
I think the evaluation would be good. I don't know that, what you're talking about in line six, I don't know that we need to say with no other items on the agenda.
I agree.
I think we can eliminate that.
So you don't need it to be alone on the agenda.
It can be at a scheduled time, and with all Board Members present.
Okay, got it.
Ms. Rineer?
My other question that I'd highlighted was line 13, that at the end of the evaluation, the Board shall develop goals for the ensuing year. Usually, when we do those kind of things, it's at a retreat. So would that kind of take this away then, if we set goals, or?
Well, you could have a retreat where you set, where you do your evaluation and your, do it in conjunction with a retreat, where you're doing the goals and you do your self-evaluation.
That seems more feasible to me than doing one part here. And if we've set this policy, we would have to continue and do that part in one day, one meeting.
All in the same meeting.
All in the same meeting, so.
To me, it seems to me like what you're saying with this policy, and I wonder if it's not too specific, frankly, but it's your policy. But I think there's legitimacy in saying that you want to evaluate yourself and self-reflex.
Right.
And how detailed you want to get on that may be a different ballgame.
I would eliminate line 13.
I'm fine with that.
Eliminate 13?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Phillips?
You know, I can't remember. I think it was Mary who came up with the evaluation document. Maybe she got it straight from TSBA, that was sent to each of us, and we simply filled it out. But it says here on A, that the Board Members shall know and be involved in the development of the standards by which they will evaluate themselves. Once again, it's very specific. And using Dr. Gilbert's word, I think that's true. You know, I'm sure we can trust our Board Chair to come up with a decent document that, and I would rather just have it mailed to us and let us fill it out, personally, but.
You know, frankly, and again, this is your ballgame, but that first sentence, to ensure the continued effectiveness of school board leadership, the Board will conduct an annual evaluation of its operational procedures.
Is enough.
Sounds great.
That's pretty good, right there.
And in some of the further policies, it talks about the, well, it may not be right, the ethical, the three-member committee appointed by the Chair, and maybe they could be the ones to come up with some questions or whatever, in the format of an evaluation? I don't know. But I think that, I think lines one and two are great. I think, as Ms. Phillips and Dr. Gilbert have said, 4A, that's a little too specific. And especially when you get down to line 12, that each judgment shall be supported by rational and objective evidence. That's going to go into a whole lot of things.
And time.
What's your suggestion, Ms. Baker?
This is strictly up to the Board, because this deals with the Board evaluating yourselves. So I will defer to what you want. It's not required by state law.
Oh, it's not required?
Well, I feel, say, we really, we don't have to have the policy. Am I right, Ms. Baker?
Right.
I think it's a good policy in that I think we're kind of monitoring ourselves, but I think that we don't want to get too specific.
So you would be happy with lines one and two only?
Well, let's see.
C isn't bad.
All right, do I have a motion? Ms. King?
I like the idea of the evaluation, because without, without one at all, we could kind of just be trading water. And I'd like to have something where, are we moving forward? Are we progressing? Are we getting better? Not just as a Board, but as a district. You know, what are our goals individually and collectively for the school district? And are we meeting those goals? That's how I interpret this thing of an evaluation. Are we, are we getting better? And if we're not, why not? And that would go back to the support of our rational and objective evidence. Now, I kind of think we need to have just lines one and two, until we figure out, what do we want to evaluate ourselves on? Where do we want to go from here? And then as we figure out what our goals are, then we can establish how we'll measure them, and what we deem success.
Okay.
But.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Rineer?
What about if we just went with lines one and two, and ended the sentence with, we'll conduct an annual evaluation of its operational procedures during a Board Retreat, and then jump down to D, which obviously would not be D any longer. The Board is not required to limit itself to the items included in any formal evaluation instrument, so that we could discuss whatever, what Dr. Gilbert, what the Board Chair come up with for us to discuss, and to see in which direction we're heading, whether we're making progress or not. This is just a suggestion. I'm sure there's someone that can say it better than I have, and then what this says, but I think, I think it would be easier to have an evaluation during a retreat.
Well, I don't think the evaluation is a bad idea.
No.
However, I don't want us to put things in here that's going to tie us down to something specific.
Yeah.
Just have it in general, and then we can develop our evaluation instrument as a Board.
Because, and I think you said something, Ms. Rineer, that a sentence or two that says, you know, changes over time. Because what we view as important now, over time, may lose its importance in something else, when it's flexibility, if you will. You know, not that, gosh, we're tied to something that's outdated.
Right.
Ms. Phillips?
Just a thought, and that is, since this is about the Board Evaluation, and so the school system evaluation, we used to, and I loved it, I absolutely loved it. The first of every year, we would read the, we would take turns going through and reading the Boardmanship Code of Ethics. And I think it's important, because it reminds us, it's like your relationship, you know, to the children, and to the community, and to the other Board Members, and to, you know, yourself, and with the Director of Schools. And reading it out loud, not only shares that, and the, being very intentional with the community, but it also reminds us, and I think in some ways, that that is what you're evaluating yourself on, as in a Board, or how, you know, what, how are you moving in your relationships with the community? I don't know if you've had a chance to read this, but it's really excellent. And it's just a thought that you might want to consider as you move forward in this.
Mr. Washington, does the, good evening, does City Council do something of this nature, evaluate themselves?
Every four years.
Every, oh, there you go.
No, no, we don't, we don't, we don't do that. I think that one thing about self-evaluating your peers on a Board, you get to know the inner workings and thinkings of all of you. You know, and there could be somebody going south, you know? And if you self-evaluate yourselves, you can pick up on that, and just because they go south don't mean you got a bad idea.
Right.
It could be, it just could be different, you know? So every four years.
Every four years.
Okay, Ms. Smith?
I really think we all just do line one, lines one and two, because it just makes it open.
Yes.
Whatever, it gives us great flexibility, and then we can run with it the way we want to, and not, we're not bound to.
Would you like to put that in form of a motion?
I'll make it in the form of a motion to accept lines one and two, and delete the rest of it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Barrett, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. All right, moving right along.
All right, the next one is 1.104. Again, you don't have a current corresponding policy. This one deals with memberships. It just indicates that the Board will maintain a membership in the TSBA, and that is actually required under state law. And do, or to be a member of that is, in accordance with state law, you need to do it through the budget, in lines four and five. So.
Say that one more time, Kelly.
The four and five indicate that you would have to set aside the money in the budget under state law.
Right, but as far as requiring to be a member of.
No, I'm sorry, you don't, you don't.
Say that.
What are other educational organizations?
Other organizations, for example, the Board is a member of AMES, which is your Association of Independent Municipal School Districts. Can't believe I remember that one. But I did. So that's a good thing.
Did you say that we're required by law to be a member?
No, no, I misspoke.
Okay, so we're not required, okay.
You're not.
Ms. Smith?
Do we have to have this? I move that we not accept this one.
And I'll tell you why I agree, because let's say time goes by, and TSBA just doesn't do what we wish, won't, or they go off in a direction we totally disagree with, or they just get lazy, and we're not getting our money's worth. Why should we be forced to do that?
Okay. You make that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Is that a second for Ms. King?
Yes.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition?
Nay.
None. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Rineer voted next.
Yeah, I think we should have it.
All right. 1.105, Legislative Involvement.
This, again, is one you don't have a current corresponding policy relative to legislative involvement. However, I know this Board is very involved with the legislature, so you can review this and see what, if any portions of this policy the Board would like to accept from TSBA.
The Tennessee Legislative Network, is that what you're with, Jared?
I said Jared again.
That's me.
The number five pertaining to the budget, Mr. Anderson, is that like TSBA meetings and that sort of thing?
I don't have a copy of what you're.
I'm sorry. Says the Board shall include in its budget appropriation, resources to cover costs, including travel expenses, necessary to ensure active participation in the legislative process.
It sounds like the TSBA meetings that you attend, yes, sir.
All right.
Day on the Hill, that kind of stuff. Like the Day on the Hill, covering that kind of expense.
Yeah.
I move that we accept this policy.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion?
I think it's a good, I'm sorry. I think it's a good policy, it just outlines everything that we should be doing. It just outlines everything that we should be doing, or reminds us of what we should be doing if we start slacking a little bit, but, and also reminds people when they read our policies what we're, what we are doing, or we're trying to do. I think the word try is probably...
Uh, I'll go down to section five, Ethics Complaints.
That's a different policy, I think.
And the next one?
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, I got my pages mixed up. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Okay?
So are you ready for 1.106?
We haven't voted on 1.105 yet. Those in favor of 1.105 as presented? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? None. Okay. Oh, there's part of 1.106. Okay.
Okay, now, policy 1.106 is the Code of Ethics, and you do have a current policy that is very similar to this one on the, on your books entitled BO40, Code of Ethics. This is a policy that is required under state law. The format that was sent to us from TSBA does include some language that isn't appropriate for the way that your school system is set up as a city school system through the city's charter and city code. For example, the first lines, I would make some revisions there in line four and five where they say public or private act. So there's, I'll clarify that when, if y'all decide to adopt the change, or just keep what you've got. The definition that you have in your current policy is accurate as well. The biggest difference they have in their policy from what you currently have is the section on Ethics Complaints. I'm not sure, some of you were on the board the last time you reviewed the Code of Ethics that is currently on the books, and y'all specifically chose not to set up a smaller committee to handle ethical issues. You, if it was an ethical issue regarding a board member, I recall that the board wanted the entire board to deal with it, and if it was an ethical issue involving an employee, you wanted the director to handle that as an employment matter. So I recall the last time in 2011, when you dealt with this policy, that was the reasoning of the board for not including what TSBA has recommended here, section five. Mr. Chair?
Well, being, being that we haven't had any of that, thank goodness. If, if, if we were to have an ethics complaint, then the entire board, from what you're saying, Kelly, would look into that and decide on it?
That is, if it, if it dealt with a board member, that's what the board had wanted last time. Because this recommended policy that TSBA suggests recommends that a committee of three, that includes two board members and one staff member, review any and all ethical complaints raised, whether it be about a board member or an employee. And that's just, that's my recollection, I pulled the notes from the last time y'all dealt with this policy, and that was some of the discussion the board had as far as setting up the subcommittee.
All right. I think I heard Ms. Phillips, then Mr. King.
You know, and by ethical, you, it's, it's the gift, it's financial mostly, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, it's, it's if you are accepting basically kickbacks, bribes, things in return for you to vote in certain ways and make decisions in certain ways, or if you are voting on matters that are benefiting you or your spouse financially directly and not disclosing that information, as required by state law, that's considered an ethical violation. So that's, that's what the issues would be that would come before that kind of a committee, is if someone is accepting, you know, bribes, kickbacks, or voting on matters without disclosing to the board members and the public that you're financially benefiting from that particular vote.
You know, that's such a delicate, an issue about which I'm sure I would know much legally, that I almost would rather defer to our board attorney on those issues, but I, buddy, I don't carry it away. I just think that when we start talking kickbacks and, and, you know, buying votes, I just think that that's legal.
Favors.
Yeah. Favors and stuff like that.
Of course, before it can be discussed, somebody's got to bring forth that information, don't they?
It also, on lines 25, 26, immediately says the committee or the board, I guess we would substitute, can refer the matter to the board attorney.
I would certainly do that.
Where, where are you?
Line 26, 25, 26.
I don't see that.
Page two.
Page two. Lines...
Oh, I'm sorry.
The number starts over at one again.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, they start at one, which is...
Well, that was, that was my question. If I'm correct, the T, the TSBA policy, page two, starting at line eight, basically describes the process of an ethics complaint.
Yes.
But if I'm correct, in our current policy, I didn't see that, where we have steps to take in the event there is one. Am I right?
That's right. There, the one, the one other difference in your current policy and TSBA's policy that I did not, I failed to mention, is if you look in your current policy at line 16, where the sentence starts, "A financial interest," the board chose to define at what point the financial interest was significant enough to have to be disclosed, and that's where the board drew the line at $1,000 a year. And that is something that that state law allowed each legislative body or school board to make that decision. Where did you want to draw the line? $100, $1,000, you know, what have you? So that, that, and that is different, that is not included in TSBA's recommended policy because at, at the time in 2011, that was what the board had decided to, to define financial interest as.
Mr. Barrett?
So the way we have it set up now, say, for example, once someone on our, on the board, there was an ethics complaint, could they be on the, if it's the whole board voting on it, would that board member that's accused be able to vote on the issue, the way we have it set up now?
No, they would have to recuse themselves.
That's what I was gonna say.
Well, I mean...
But I didn't see that in here.
Exactly. How do I know that? Because I don't see it spelled out in our policy.
And then I had my other, but, yeah, okay.
Go ahead.
No, that was, that was my one big thing right now, is just the way we have it set up was, if we had another board member that was accused, but...
Ms. Renier?
Well, since this is talking about personal interest and, and the idea of kickback, in the old policy, BO40, I think that that amount of money is way too high because we would assume you don't receive anything from anyone, and, so I think that $1,000 is kind of high, isn't it?
I think it was written to deal with things, and remember, this policy not only applies to board members, but it applies to employees. It was to deal with situations where someone gives someone tickets to go to a football game, the Titans game.
Okay.
Nowadays, depending on the game, that could get to be that much. And as long as the employee filled out the form and disclosed that they received something that cost $1,000 or more, then it was okay.
Okay.
But it was the fact that it had to be disclosed. And in your old policy, you do have a form that the board member or employee would have to fill out and turn in to HR to disclose.
Sorry, that's what I was just gonna say. If, if such, since the new policy does not have a form, maybe we could incorporate that into this policy. Because there isn't a way in which to do that, I don't think. I can't remember what I saw at the end. There was, yeah.
There's not.
There's not.
I remember.
There's a typo on line 13.
Sorry, that's all.
It's okay.
Mr. Barrett?
I remembered my other thing. On line 58 of our old, current policy, it says $100, but then we have $1,000 on the first page. That's another difference I saw between these two is, so was it 100 or 1,000, or is it, I mean...
Well, I, I think the line 17, 1,000 is a financial interest or a personal interest.
And that's a gift, and this one's turned to a gift.
But the $100 mentioned on line 58 is we, it's okay if somebody gave, gave you a cup of coffee, for example. You ran into somebody and they gave you a cup of coffee. I just can't give you a whole bunch of it, but... What about this? I mean, if I'm right, our current policy is a code of ethics. Here's what we want you to abide by. What if we had our own, an additional policy that's, here's how we handle ethics complaints, rather than bundle the two together? Because Jared, Jared brings up a great point. You know, the TSBA policy is you'll have a committee, somebody's a chairman and a secretary of, of that committee for a one-year term. Well, do we want to do that? And then let's say one person is, has a complaint filed, then in our policy, the other remaining members take action, whatever you want to call it. Or do you want the person who has had the complaint filed to have their defense? Or is this where the board attorney comes into play? But I think rather than jumble the two, we have here our code of ethics, and then here's how we handle ethics complaints. We have a process or a policy, how to handle those. Because if I'm right, as is, we don't.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
With an ethics committee, all right, there's two members of the board and one person from the central office, okay? Now, when that group meets, where are we in regards to sunshine law and public meeting as compared to if the entire board takes it up?
Anytime two or more members meet to discuss or deliberate, it becomes a public meeting.
Is that to discuss or deliberate, which may result in a vote, which this would do, wouldn't it?
Right. So it, and it would be, if you had two staff members and one board member, then that would not fall under the open meetings law. But two board members is what pushes that ethics committee into a meeting that has to be advertised and is open to the public.
Ms. Mia?
My opinion is, we're a small enough board, and it has to be, go, it has to be public anyway, that it doesn't have to go to a committee. That it would go, would follow suit, that it would come to the whole board, because it has, has to be public anyway. The reason to have it in small quarters is to keep it small, but if it has to go, if the sunshine law makes us, you know, it's gonna be out there anyway, it might as well go to the whole board. But I do think it needs to be noted that that person has to recuse themselves from the vote.
With...
So we just take out the committee then? Is that what you're saying?
Would you more, would you be more likely to have people other than the committee at that meeting? Or would you be more likely to have people other than the board at the board meeting? You follow what I'm saying?
I have a feeling that if there was a release that said that we were gonna have an ethics committee meeting, that we, we have good media.
Yeah. You might be surprised. Mr. Barrett?
I like the fact that there's a way to outline what we would do with the ethics complaint, since it seems to be lacking in our current policy, which it's always good to have that. Instead of having this whole thing about a committee, change the ethics committee to state the board, and then maybe have some language in there about, if it's a board member accused, they would recuse themselves, but we'd keep all this language with, with those kind of recommendations I just stated. That's just a suggestion, but if the board wants to do it, that's fine.
Okay. Ms. Renier?
I move that we accept this policy from TSBA, 1.106, with the changes being that we disregard the ethics committee and leave it as a whole board. And there was one more thing. What was it? What'd you just say, Jared?
I was gonna leave the ethics, yeah, we'll switch the ethics committee to the board. That's what I was getting, and that's...
Okay. What I was thinking was, and also add in the form that would be filled out should there be a violation.
And will you be handling issues dealing with employee ethical issues or just board member ethical issues?
Was that not a separate policy?
No.
No.
It's all in here. This is all for both.
That's what I was saying, keep the two separate. You know, because we can get into the meat and potatoes of, here's our policy of how to handle ethics complaints. We can spell all that out rather than try to jumble it into one.
I think it should be the same. So my motion would be the same for both, board and/or employee.
Yeah. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Smith. Any other discussion? Everybody understand?
I have one little thing I just wanted to throw out, and as you know, I, I think we want to be careful not to put some poor hapless board member in the future in a situation that could be embarrassing. If you, for example, invested in a mutual fund, you don't necessarily know where your funds are being spent. And if this mutual fund, say they bought a parcel of land to build a school on, and you voted that the school be built there, you don't know that your funds have been used in that mutual fund to purchase that. You could get a recompense, you could get, you know, an amount of over $1,000, and then later be accused of an ethic viol, ethics violation without intending to. So I think that it's possible, I mean, I just think that whatever we do, it needs to be done with, with respect, that people do not always intentionally err.
Of course.
And so, it's just a thought.
Any other discussion? Ms. Baker?
Just a couple of little tweaks based on the generic language they used in lines four and five, where it says, "Which was duly created by a public or private act." I'll revise that to reflect how this board was created. And line nine, I would take out "or corporation."
Where are you reading from?
From the beginning.
This is the current one.
In the...
Oh, in the current part.
No, this is in 1.106.
Okay.
That's what I meant. You'll page one or two.
The first, the title page, cover page.
Are you with me now?
All this that I have highlighted is what I've seen already.
Okay.
Well, I still don't find it.
On the first page.
Okay.
She wants to take out where it says duly created by the General Assembly, that'll have to come out.
Oh, I got you, I got you.
And then that committee's commissions, blah, 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 would all come out as well, corporations.
Yeah, line nine, I'll fix that line on line nine.
And line nine, corporation.
And line 26, the disclosure form is turned in, in your current policy, you chose to have it turned in, you were more specific, instead of central office, you said Murfreesboro City Schools HR Director. You, you were, you were more specific than central office, so people knew exactly who in central office to turn it into. So those would be changes I would like to make.
Line 25 has a typo on the word file.
Yeah, and that happened again on the other page.
Yes, I saw that also.
Now, let me ask one more question, if I may. On the second page, line 25, the committee may, go down to line 29, in the case of an employee, is this what you're talking about, where it's not a board member, but someone in the city schools, for example?
Right. And that is saying, in the case of an employee, you're going to refer the matter to the official responsible for supervision of the employee for possible disciplinary action. And that's where it would get referred to Dr. Gilbert, if it's a school employee.
Got you.
Well, now, if that, if he was a teacher, it, we would, it would be referred to the building level principal first, or not?
Yeah, it, yeah, it could.
So that would be the direct supervisor.
And Dr. Gilbert is the only one that can issue discipline.
Yeah. Typically, that's, it would be just like any other complaint. I would want that principal to investigate first and then talk to me about it.
All right. Good discussion.
So repeat the motion.
Oh. Repeat the motion. Um, let me see. I move that we accept this policy with the changes that Ms. Baker has just described, those little idiosyncrasy things. And instead of saying, all of this in lines four and five, take out the appropriate words and leave in the employees. This would be a code of ethics for both employees and the system. And then add in our form that we had to show the conflict of interest disclosure statement.
So are we going to have an ethics?
Code of ethics.
Are we going to have an ethics committee as spelled out?
No, we're taking that out, that would come before the board. I'm not sure I said exactly what I said before.
Ethics committee would just become the board.
Yes.
I second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. We've had good discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? And there is none. All right, thank you.
Okay, next you have 1.106-1. They recommended that you continue to keep your current policy, BO 38, the boardsmanship code of ethics. And that's the document Ms. Phillips was referring to earlier that has been read in the past by the board.
Okay. Ms. Renier?
Did we not just take out location of residence off of another policy? Does it remain here? What is meant by that in line eight, under section two?
Okay, where...
Line, where do you read from? Where are you at?
1.106-1. Line eight, regardless of ability race, blah, 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 blah. Location of residence. Because I got to thinking, does that mean children that are covered under, was it McKinney-Vento?
McKinney-Vento, that could be McKinney-Vento, it could mean different zonies.
So what you're saying here with this is you will seek to provide equal educational opportunities regardless of where the children live, if they're part of our student, if they're our students.
Right, okay.
Right, right.
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Policy 1.106-1.
Second.
Mr. Barrett made the motion to approve. Ms. Phillips, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Next one is 1.108. You do not have a corresponding policy. This deals with nepotism.
All right. Ms. Smith?
Dr. Gilbert, how is this handled presently?
Mr. Ringstaff, would you come and address the issue of nepotism? I think it has, I think the way that it's worded is direct supervision, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So line nine is what we follow?
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Renier?
The only thing I see that would need the changes that you're making, Ms. Baker, line three would not be county commissioner, it would probably be a city councilman. And then at the bottom, when it lists the terms related to a relative, I think we need to include stepparent. It's not in there.
Do you also want to include stepchildren?
Yes.
Yeah.
So am I reading this, so every time Butch Campbell votes about the schools, he doesn't have to say, "My son teaches at Siegel Elementary." I mean, that's how I read it.
He does or does not.
He would. He does. Prior to voting on any matter of business that may have an effect upon the employment of a relative, the member shall declare such relationship. In making such a declaration, the member shall certify that his or her vote on the pending matter will be in the best interest of the school system. So before you vote on raises, you would say, "I disclose that I have a relative that is an employee of the school system. However, my vote will be in the best interest of the school system." That's the way, and I believe that's been done in the past.
Dr. Brown.
Okay.
I move that we accept this policy, 1.108.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. King. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. All right.
Okay, now, 1.200. You do have a corresponding policy, which is BO 3.
It's untitled.
And the one...
The one change that you have, I think, from what was sent to TSBA, is in line 11 and line 12, that was taken from code. So that would be the one thing that was added when...
And they are saying in their recommended policy, at the first regular meeting of the year, which has not been this board's schedule.
Right.
This board has, let's see...
It's the first beginning of the fiscal year.
Fiscal year, right.
Well, and y'all have always done it, I believe, in October.
October.
October or September.
I was going, I thought it was September for some reason.
Maybe September. You do it in September because TSBA always has a chairperson meeting in October. So that's why you've always taken the vote in September.
In fact, I think we have actually done it before then, shortly after the city election. Haven't we? Because the city election has been in April.
Correct.
In terms of our board goes from that time to the next election.
Well, that had to be done because the current chair at that point was no longer on the board.
Yeah.
So we had to do an extra election.
Okay.
That year, Ms. Wade didn't run again.
So do we need to say, what are we saying, September?
Y'all have typically done it, as long as y'all have done it in September. And you've done it other months before that, and you eventually tried to get on a better schedule where you aim for September. I know there have been months where the whole board wasn't going to be present, so you've moved it a month or so. But you always try to get it done before October, so the new chair could go to the October Chair Seminar.
Election is what, August 4th? They'll give plenty of time. Okay. Ms. Smith? Ms. Phillips?
Um, this is a little off topic, but it's still on this. And this is a departure. I would like to recommend something that for you all to consider over the next few months. And that is, our esteemed vice chair is going to be rolling off the board, and she will be sorely missed.
No, she's not off. She's got two more years.
I have two more years.
Oh, you have two more years? Oh, good. Okay. Okay, good, good. I don't know why I thought you were...
I don't, Mary Wade did too.
Mary Wade thought that? Somebody told me that, maybe it's Mary. Okay. Anyway, but I still think this is important. And so I'll go ahead and bring it up. And that is, that from time to time, you all have been very kind and gracious and made comments regarding the value you put on experience. And I think there's some truth in that. And I think that's why the council uses their longest-serving council member as vice chair. They began that process some time back. I would recommend that we emulate the council. And when I am no longer on the board, you perhaps consider using your longest sitting member as the vice chair, because, and so I want you to make sure I'm not promoting myself, because I would not accept it. But the, but I do think that the person who's been serving a long time does bring value to the board, and a sense of history. And it's a way to, I think, to enrich the board. And I think there are so many great members here, and I don't know who would be sitting the second.
I would actually be that person. Which is very scary to think that after you leave, then that would happen. That's a very interesting concept. I would sure hate for Ms. Renier to lose that spot.
Well, maybe, you know, it's just something to consider down the road. Because I do think that the way that the council, they started that process, if I'm correct, under former Mary Bragg. And I think there, you know, that's a good way, because it brings a different type of, there's dual leadership. There's the fresh, and then there's some longevity there. And so I would recommend that over the next few months, you might consider that, following the city council's, you know, lead on that, because I think they have a good setup.
But that's it.
Okay. Mr. Barrett?
Since our elections have been moved to August, should we not maybe have our election immediately following that election now, since we?
We could still do it first September.
Or first, okay, or, yeah.
So that would still give the board chair an opportunity to register for the meeting at TSBA. Because it's not until mid-October, isn't it?
Yep.
Okay. All right, any other? Do I have a motion to accept?
Well, we need to tweak this, right?
Well, that's what I'm waiting on.
Well, but that says at the first regular meeting of the year, which would be the beginning of August, and the election will have just happened, correct?
Well, I would say, I could change that to the first regular meeting in the month of September.
That's perfect, yes.
That's what I'm...
You're thinking of something.
Well, I'm thinking...
And you're thinking of something.
And it may never happen. We've got to remember now, policies that we are, we're citing on are policies that could be in effect for a long time. What if somebody decides to change the city election back to April? Don't think they would, but...
Or, I was just going to think that it's in August now, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, which is a primary, presidential primary. I think what you're saying is, what if it goes even later? What if they have it November?
Have changed the policy.
So, but we could change the policy in then, but...
We can amend it, I guess.
Yeah, you can amend the policy.
Yeah, whenever.
All right. All right, Ms. Phillips?
I'll throw out one more comment on a different note. There's been, you know, opposing schools of thought about when to elect the chair and board chair over the years. One school of thought, which hasn't been brought up tonight, was that it should be elected before, I mean, they should be elected before the old board members who are going to roll off the board do so, because they are more familiar with the people on the board. And new board members coming on won't have, they'll have wonderful will and passion, but they, hopefully, but they won't have a lot of knowledge base as to who might be a good leader. So that is why sometimes they have made sure that the elections happened right before the changing of the guard, so to speak.
Okay. I'm happy leaving it in September, but that's the board prerogative. Ms. Smith?
So I move that we accept this with the change of it being, the election being in September.
Okay. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Renier. We've had discussion. All in favor, say aye. Any opposition? Thank you. All right.
Next is 1.201. And that's duties of the officers. You don't have a corresponding policy. So this is up to the board as to whether they believe they need this policy.
Thought I had that thing turned off.
It's a nice cute little song.
Yeah.
He's in Florida, he don't know where I am, anyway. I'm sorry, Ms. Baker.
As I was saying, you don't have a corresponding policy, so it's up to the board whether to adopt this, or it is incorporating, there are some state statutes that reference what the role of the chair of the school board's responsibilities are. And you see those footnotes, those are the statutes that spell out the duties of the board chair.
The only thing I see in the TSBA policy is a chair pro tem, and we don't have that.
Well, that is just a person that if both you and Ms. Renier were absent, then a chair pro tem is a board member that gets chosen at the beginning of the meeting to fill in.
Okay. That's what I'm saying, if we developed, if we accepted their policy, that's something we would have to do, right?
Well, and you just do that at that particular meeting.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, thank you, okay?
I've got a question.
Mr. King?
Where is it spelled out, how many members we have to have for a meeting to be official?
That's in state law. To, you have to have the, help me out, Gary, you know...
Is it four, just a simple majority?
Quorum, it's four.
It's a majority of the membership.
Of the membership, so it's four. So if you had five, that's a quorum, but if you take a vote, it takes four to pass something, not three.
Okay. So only four of us could be here and we could have the meeting? Or five?
Four.
Four, well, okay.
Four, but all four have to vote in favor of something for it to pass.
And in the case of four people being present, and the chair and the vice chair are not here, we would need a chair pro tem.
Right.
But then what if the chair pro tem was one of those missing?
No, you just elected at that particular meeting.
That's what I'm asking.
I believe you've been at the cable commission when we've had to do that a couple of times.
I may have missed that one.
Well, and then usually, Dr. Gilbert would maybe get the ball rolling and say, "Any nominations for a chair pro tem? Somebody nominate them."
Gotcha, okay.
Y'all second and vote who's going to run the meeting, since the chair and vice chair are gone.
I'm sure it was spelled out, I just couldn't remember where it was, how many we had to have.
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Smith?
Line 20, there's a typo.
That should be a footnote six. It should be a superscript, so I'll make sure that's corrected.
Mr. Barrett, do you have a question?
I didn't know if we wanted to, because I keep saying the director of schools is going to keep the minutes. Do we want to designate, or, I don't know, we've done that in the past on some of our policies, but, or is that just, is that from the statute saying it's got to be?
That is, under the statute.
Okay. All right. By me.
I'm sorry, Ms. Renier?
Do you, as chair, do all of these things now, all these 10 things? Because I see things here that I had no idea you would do. And, well, we know, we just talked about if we had a conflict of interest or ethics, then you would be number six to conduct the board hearing, per se. Is that what that means?
And there can be a variety of different types of hearings that could come before school board. And those could be discipline hearings for employees, for students.
So it could be many other things. But do you countersign things? And do you, did you go and prepare the budget with Dr. Gilbert and...
I did meet with Mr. Anderson and Dr. Gilbert, yes.
And you authorized the mechanical check writing equipment? So all of these things, and you know the surplus value of $250. I think that there are some things here that don't apply to us, perhaps. All of these, all 10? Okay, sorry, I just didn't think you did all that.
Well...
You are, you are a busy person, you and Dr. Gilbert and Mr. Anderson.
$250?
Just another cog in the wheel. All right, we have any other discussion on this policy? On duties of officers?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Renier, for moving second. Mr. Barrett seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? And there is none, okay.
And next you have 1.202, which deals with duties of board members. Again, these... Again, these are basically mimicking what is in state statute. You do not currently have a corresponding policy regarding this.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Smith?
Wasn't that one of the first things that we did, though? Is this just not kind of a more abbreviated version?
Oh, the very first policy?
Yes. So, we've already adopted this. It's the role of the Board of Education. This is the duties of board members.
These are.
I'm fine with just going with the role of the Board of Education. I mean, I mean, there are some different things.
Yeah. I think because, because we do a duties of the officers, that we should, to keep it consistent, we should do duties of the board members.
Okay.
I'm in favor of keeping it.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett, a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Rineer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition, there is none. All right.
Okay, the next one is 1.203, new member orientation. Your corresponding policy that you currently have adopted is BO 12. This just is a little bit more detailed than your current adopted policy.
I have a question about that one. On number three, where it says that, that to provide each new board member, I'm assuming the minutes of the board meetings, we're talking about access to them, so that could be on the website.
Yes, yes.
So for line three, provide access to the minutes, or let them, or, because you could take that, I want hard copies of them, you know, if we didn't specify which.
So add provide access to?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, they can just, we'll direct them to go to the website.
Tell the rest of us, Daniel, what you're talking about.
So, number three, it says minutes of the board meeting, I mean, they could, the way it's written, I mean, it could be literally all paper. That way they can direct them to it, and it's on the website, so they can just.
Some of the things here, I think, Mr. Campbell, like a copy of the board's policy manual, minutes of the board meetings, those things that are not readily accessible on the website, I could see providing hard copies to. But for those things, I think it would be equally acceptable to provide electronic copies. But that was my question, with it being written that way, how tightly that would have to be adhered to.
You know me, I'm the squeaky wheel over here.
Go squeaky.
Go squeaky. Yes, I agree. But on the other hand, I think if a new board member is coming in and wants a hard copy, why, why not provide it for them?
I think you're absolutely correct. I think just having it there, though, to say that by being in board policy, to me, it would look like that I would be required to, but certainly I think there would be that opportunity to say, but you can have, you're welcome to have a hard copy if you want to.
Because it would be a lot easier, if they're trying to familiarize themselves with what's happened in the last year, than, rather than trying to go through and find the minutes through all the pages and pages online, if somebody just gave it, you know, our board secretary gave it to them, they could flip through real quick, just, you know, just the minutes. And, and really, it would save, it would be huge time savings for them, but, you know, and I just think that you, you know, get over, I mean, you just want to be considerate of one another, you know, so.
I'm, I'm just thinking if, well, I understand where you're coming from, but at the same time, those minutes are online, and if they, and they can go online to look at them, rather than, I mean, that's a whole, a lot of copies. Somebody's got to spend a lot of time looking those up, pulling them out, copying them.
That's why you want.
Kind of like the records law, to me. Mr. King?
As the newest board member, I will tell you that we need a thing on there that says, please don't have the water or the fire hose coming at you too hard. The minutes didn't help me much. It's nice to know where they are, it's nice to know the flow. What helps is learning who's who, and what they do, the departments, and who is in each Knowing Mr. Anderson's financial reports, and what they mean, when you go over those each time, because we went over that. And the, the last page we go over, the attendance report, that is, you know, that would be a great thing for new member orientation, what each of that means. And really, all, all of what I've said fits under the fourth bullet point, lines eight and nine. That, that to me, I mean, just, just the normal, here's how we do our meetings, and we do these certain things this time of year. I think that was printed for me at one point in time. That was extremely helpful.
Mr. Barrett?
Maybe you want to add something, introduction to relevant staff?
Senior.
Senior staff?
Yeah, I think that's, and I can do that if, if you want to do that. I think board policy, keeping them as generic as you can, though.
Mm-hmm.
I think certainly I would welcome any suggestions, but as far as writing in board policy, because I think those things.
But that, I think it's covered under basically eight and nine. The new member with the operation of the school system, that's, that's where that, to me, fits in. That was more helpful to me than reading the minutes, be it online or printed. Minutes were helpful, but I'm reading names of people, I have no idea who they are, and it helps me to know who they are and what they did.
Okay. Ms. Rineer?
I think with line three, we can fix it by saying it shall be the responsibility of the director of schools to provide to each new board member, comma, either electronically or by hard copy, and then your four bullets. So you can do it either way, whatever that person prefers.
I think that's a good idea.
That would be good.
Or access to. Access to the minutes, hard copy or electronic.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to approve, as has been amended by Ms. Rineer and others?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition, there is none. Okay.
Next is board policy 1.204, and this one deals with board member development opportunities. You do not have a current corresponding policy.
Well, item number two, the board as a whole, shall retain authority to approve or disapprove participation. I think we have given Mr. Anderson that responsibility.
On number two?
Uh huh. In regards to our funds for meetings and trips and stuff, and you, you've done that within the budget.
Yes, sir. Once you approve the total dollar amount in the budget, then it's up, it's there, available for you to use, and then as far as who approves it, then you, you've approved the total, but then you've asked me to approve the individuals.
Right, right. Okay. Ms. Rineer?
I think the other thing that, in number five, line 17, to keep the public informed through the news media, we really haven't done that one. We've gone to workshops and seminars and things.
Well, but we're, we're, as good stewards, we do adhere.
Right, right. And we talk about the meetings here, but I guess news media would be the TV cameras, right? So I guess we're complying anyway, you know?
We count y'all.
And then we have our friends here.
You could also use the Twitter account from our school district as another opportunity to do that. I know a lot of people get on there and look at it.
Any other discussion on 1.204? Ms. Phillips?
I, we have not done in the past number one, but I like it.
I do, too. I like it.
And I'd like us to, I mean, I would really like to have that. Sorry, Melanie.
I'm kind of surprised.
A lot of that comes from TSBA, though. TSBA calendar.
I hadn't got anything.
Yeah, it would be.
Me neither.
Say that.
I signed up for my workshop.
They send out a list of all the academies.
EA stuff, too.
I haven't got anything along time.
I don't remember anything.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Haven't gotten a magazine or that quarterly, hadn't gotten anything?
It wasn't recently, it was a month or two ago I got the quarterly.
I never did.
Mr. Barrett?
I make a motion, we approve with your change to, what was that, line, line two, line with the, with the finance director?
Yeah, okay. All right, I have a motion to approve, as amended, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none.
Okay, the last, is this the last one for tonight?
Is it? No, we got two more.
Two more, okay. 1.205 is board director relations, you do have a current corresponding policy, BO 4. Which version do you want to adopt?
In our policies, Kelly, for example, one that, well, we'll take this one for example, okay? TSBA is 1.205, ours is BO 4.
Right.
Will there be anything in that policy manual that would tell us that our BO 4 is the same as their 1.20?
It's all going to be changed.
If you look at the top, and the way these, it says rescinds, and it'll reference which prior policy.
Right.
It, it, related to.
Okay.
So that's, that's how we'll have the legislative history of the policies that way.
Ms. Rineer, then, Ms. Phillips?
I do like, on our old policy, I think they're pretty much the same, but I do like lines, basically, seven and eight, that the director will notify board members of any possible happenings of emergency nature. I think that should be added in here somewhere.
That was my comment, too. I agree.
Any other discussion on this policy?
I like ours better.
All right, so, what's the plan here? Keep BO 4 as we have it? I'm sorry, somebody?
I was just going to make a motion to, I actually liked the TSBA one, with the, with the addition of what Ms. Rineer said, with the last sentence. The director of schools will notify board members as promptly as possible about the nature, but that'd be my motion, to keep the TSBA position and add the sentence.
Okay.
The last sentence from our old policy.
All right. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Rineer. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Okay. Board committees?
We got one more?
This is your last one that, for tonight, and this, this one you do have a current policy, BO 49, and it hasn't been too long since the last time we had a lot of discussion trying to decide how to deal with board committees. So, I will take direction as to which version or combination version you want to adopt.
Ms. Smith?
I move that we keep BO 49, as is, the old policy.
All right. Have a motion to accept BO 49 as is, have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Phillips. Any other discussion? I think as far as discussion goes, it would be nice, and maybe we do, and I just don't know where it is, a list of those committees, and who's serving on those committees, and do those members, some of those committees change from year to year?
I think, well, somewhere it said the committees would last for one year, I thought.
Okay. Well, we're, but.
Maybe it's not on here, maybe I'm in a different place.
No.
It's a different one.
Not, not on the one we're voting on.
Right, wrong one, sorry.
Like, with the time that we, we scheduled the, the visits for city council, was that basically what we did? We had a committee of people, we put that together, and then it was over?
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
So Ms. Gates helped, too.
But is that generally what the new policy's spelling out, that, but instead of appointing committee, we just asked for volunteers to do it? People volunteered, it was done, it was over. But according to the new one, we had to report, you would have had to report, so.
We, we have different committees that board members serve on. I'm not, just not.
Right, like the cable commission, there's a board member that has to go serve on that.
Okay.
And you.
The preschool advisory committee.
School coordinated health, I'm on that one, we've not met yet. Foundation, so there are several.
City school advisory, city leading family, community advisory, GSP advisory, workforce development task force, city schools foundation.
All right, can you get me a list of those committees, and who is, who are the present members from our board?
Yes, sir.
And then later on, we will decide if we need to change any, if anybody wants to off, or whatever. As we start, somebody starts the new year. All right, do I have a motion to accept BO 49 as our, the way our policy is? That what, wasn't that what it was?
There is a motion and seconded.
Okay, thank you, I thought so. I just wanted to see if you were awake, Ms. Smith. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition, and there is none. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Baker. I don't know how long you've been working on this, but it's been a while, I'm sure. Mr. Barrett?
I wanted to add one thing. I know these are new, the setup for us, and I do like the top left corner where it says review annually, like it reminds you when to review these, and it gives you a specific month, and, so I did like that.
I thought ours had that.
No.
It didn't, huh?
I didn't know.
Tells minutes three by.
No, okay. Not that.
What about tomorrow, are we on?
We still got more to go over.
Oh, we do, oh, yeah.
Excited among you, didn't you?
Go home, sorry about that.
Oh, not yet.
I am.
We're halfway home.
I gotta leave in a minute.
All right.
Mr. Anderson, right?
Update on 10 ready? That, would you, would you like to give us an update? Are you ready for reports and information?
Yes, ma'am.
Return to center. I did want to give you an update on 10 ready, and this was actually on the agenda before recent developments. We do have today, we have some answer documents. We do not have all answer documents. We have no answer documents for science and social studies. We have no test booklets. I have written to the state and asked if we cannot decide, let individual schools decide when they want to give these tests. We'll, we'll be handing out or delivering tomorrow morning the, the booklets, the answer sheets we do have, because what our assistant principals will need to do is go through, and even though they have the student's name and some information on them, they will have to go through and, and mark any accommodations they have to have, this will allow them to go ahead and be sitting up their groups. So, we have until May the 10th, well, through May the 10th to test, but basically, I guess what I'm informing the board of, is I have told the, the schools that when they get all the information, all the stuff that they need to test, go ahead and test. And so that's, that's where we are with that. I have met, actually, yesterday was meeting with some other superintendents, and many are in the same situation that we're in. What we're receiving is, we're receiving some, some, we may receive some answer documents to fourth grade math at Black Fox, and not all. We have almost made daily trips to Rutherford County to pick up some of our materials, and so at this point in time, unless I hear otherwise from the state, I've given discretion to the schools for when they test and what they test. We were scheduled to test this week, we have delayed it until next week. I can see us even pushing back maybe beyond that, but, so that's why I'm not sitting a certain day, but I'm letting the schools to. certain day, but I'm letting the schools decide that. We had NWEA testing, which is our benchmark test that we're required to do for RTI, and so that was scheduled, and I, schools are now doing that if they want to do that. So basically, we've given tremendous flexibility from the school, for the schools to test when they need to test, and I think that's what needs to happen. And it's certainly my hope that we'll hear information tomorrow that indeed they agree with us, that we should be allowed to have our schools test when they, when they need to test. So that's the update on 10 ready.
Do, you're saying we have some answer documents, but not all?
Well, I'll give you an example. We have, Northfield has a box of fourth grade math, and they have a box of sixth grade math, and they have a box of third grade, they have a box in each of their grade levels for English Language Arts, and they have nothing for science and social studies. On the other hand, Reese Rogers has a box of sixth grade math, and they have a box of third grade, a box of fourth grade, and a box of fifth grade English Language Arts, but no sixth grade.
What about test documents?
We have received no test documents.
None, that's what I thought.
I was actually conferring with a colleague of mine from another county, and it seems they have all their testing booklets, but no answer sheet. So I tried to cut a deal where we would just share, but, yeah, I don't think that we got to it.
You still don't think we should boycott?
No, I, no, I don't think so, but I do hope that, I do hope that, depending on what happens with this, that the state would decide not to. I think that it would be great if the state would follow our recommendation, that we gave them with the resolution.
Hold harmless and all that? That's amazing.
And if we don't have all the material needed by...
If we cannot test, but, the last day to test is May the 10th.
Okay.
Wow.
I think there is, and one of the things that I wrote to the state was in requesting that flexibility to allow schools to test when they, when they got all of their materials, is because with our large schools, when you're talking about a thousand student school, and you're talking about third through sixth grade, it takes a long time for assistant principals to come through and to put down what accommodations there are. And then, on the other hand, remember that you've got to go back and count all those documents, re-box them, and get them out within a very short period of time.
True.
But I do appreciate the, this board, and the stance of this board, and the understanding of this board as far as the disruption that the test process has been this year. And that's your update.
Okay, Mr. Barrett?
Well, I'm still on record, I wish they'd scrap it, like Alaska did, they scrapped their whole statewide test, the rest of it, and I still wish they would do it. I know they're not going to, and we've been told they're gonna fine us if we decided to boycott it, which I find unfortunate, but I just wish they would reconsider that, it's been such a disruption. We have to find proctors again, we have to, there's all these different things.
Actually, and I haven't addressed proctors with the schools, but our schools had chosen to do proctors, the state no longer requires that, but our teachers felt much more secure with all the mandates for security and what can happen if there's any kind of evidence of the testing not being above board, that I think all of our schools but one had agreed on proctors, and I haven't, frankly, I haven't checked with them to see if they're getting proctors. I'm leaving that, that's their call.
Okay.
Well, I know for, that, you know, they had proctor scheduled for this week.
Right.
I don't know about next week, but I agree with her. I wish we could say return to sender.
I don't know if they can, and frankly...
Maybe the post office is going to try.
Well, you know, you'd sent some information, and there were 14 packages, and I actually dug into this. The 14 packages were all shipped Federal Express from Garner, North Carolina, which is, looks like a suburb of Riley, North Carolina, so it's not out in the boondocks. But the shipper, I'm assuming is a printer, printed those labels somewhere between 4:00 and 6:00 PM. Federal Express did not pick them up until the next day, Friday the 22nd, and they were sent for an overnight delivery, to be delivered in the afternoon. They were supposed to have been delivered yesterday to all the schools and some in the central office. And they're in Murfreesboro, according to the FedEx website, and before the meeting started, I was actually online with them, trying to find out what the status is. They don't know. And I've gotten a phone call from them since we've been in this meeting, and I'll follow up on that. My gut tells me the printer got caught behind. I also noticed in the email, there's such a thing as the Office of Logistics, Office of Assessment Logistics. So did they tell the printer what to do? And the printer had to scramble to meet those demands, not only they're caught behind, but it sounds like a perfect storm of a lot of little things going wrong.
And I, having said that, I do appreciate the fact that we get almost daily updates from the state on where we are, or at least we get information about where we are with the tracking. It's just very difficult, and what I've heard from other superintendents is, it's very, I understand they're trying to get it to us as fast as they can, but it's extremely difficult to keep up with what we have and what we don't have, and where it is, and where it should be. So, but I do want to commend Siobhan Davis Lewis and the administration at Central Office, and also the administration of the schools. We have had to change and re-change meeting dates and activities around this, and as Mr. Thompson wrote me yesterday, he said, "I just can't keep up with all the changes." And I wrote him back, and I said, "I totally understand." So, it's not only, it's not only impacted just the testing, but it's impacted the events that normally occur during this time of year, and the meetings that need to occur in preparation for next year. So, I agree. I think that, looking back, it would be nice if we had had this year as a year of learning.
Well, I will agree with what Mr. Barrett said easily, because not only is it, you know, if the students are gonna test, okay. Now, the test results are not gonna be back by the end of school, they're not, may not be back by the time school starts next year. Most principals in schools have already determined class loads, and children that are gonna be in this class, and that class, and schedules, and that sort of thing, plus the fact of the, what I want to say. The effect, I guess, that we're having on children, and their, the way they're looking at the test, on the importance of them, and at the same time, to be under the idea of, well, what's gonna happen tomorrow? Are we gonna start testing? No, we're gonna wait until next, no, well, they don't know. And children, students, you know, they pick up on that sort of thing, and they get frustrated. Consequently, as the commissioner said out here in the Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce a long time ago, the score's not gonna be anywhere near what they would've been, I don't think. So, as Mr. Barrett says, I think we ought to just scrap the whole thing and make it a learning experience, and get rid of measurement.
Good idea.
Dr. Gilbert has been so kind to say she appreciates getting an update each day, and I think that's fantastic if you only got one, but you've sent us copies where you've gotten five or six updates in a day, and that is totally wrong. Somebody's messed up royally, and it shouldn't be taken out on the children in the state of Tennessee. We should not have the rest of the nation look at us and say, "Whoa, look at their scores. Two years ago, they were the most highest achieving, and now they're down in the pits" and all that. This is wrong, and I would suggest parents write letters, not to us, because we can't do anything about it, write to your state Board of Education people, because this is ridiculous. It's not fair to anybody. We all know that, but I just have to preach a little bit, I guess, I'm sorry.
I think it's gonna have an effect on...
On everybody.
Recruitment of industry.
Oh.
Or recruitment of teachers.
Well, that...
And that's another thing, is this could, now, if you're a teacher making lesson plans, and it's changing day by day, you know?
Yeah.
It's gotta be frustrating for them.
Sure it is.
So, May 10th, if we don't have the materials, we don't do it at all?
Yay.
Okay? I like that.
Maybe they can get lost in the mail.
And I don't know what it looks like, I will tell you, Mr. King, I don't know what it looks like, if we get, the prep to get ready to test, it takes a while, and so I think that that's gonna be, if we get closer to that date, I think then we'll have to have a discussion about what does that look like, because we can't test all the tests on one day. We can't prep for the test today and test tomorrow, it's just impossible.
Yeah.
The other thing, I guess, to make you all aware of, and I really hadn't planned to talk about this, but I will, but the state has given flexibility as far as the teachers' 15%, and I have told the principals they can discuss with their teachers, and if they wish to change what they originally chose for their 15% and also administrators, that they can do that. And they have, I believe it's until May, I think it's May 15th, but let me go back, but I'll send you an email on that. But I do need to let you know that, and that's something that has gotten mixed up with all the other stuff, and I haven't sent it to you, but I will do that. But they do have flexibility to change what their choice of 15% is, in the context of the list that the state gives us that they can choose from.
Right.
Alright, Ms. Anderson, we're ready for budget. I hope you got some good news pertaining to budget.
Okay, the budget, we did receive the information from the state on the BEP, and we will have the meeting tomorrow night to go over that with you. That's your choice.
Four o'clock at Central Office.
Sir, that's fine with me, if that's okay with Dr. Gilbert and the rest of the board.
Sure.
Yeah. That's what we said.
That's what we said.
Thursday also.
Came in at midnight.
If we need...
Actually, a little before midnight.
Will we need, you think, more than one session?
I don't think so.
But if we do, we'll come back on Thursday?
Different time, though.
Well, we had that May 1st meeting scheduled.
I really don't foresee that you'll need it.
Okay.
I haven't had time to get with Mr. Anderson, because he's been trying to find out about state rules and regs and laws and stuff.
Are we feeling good?
We feel better.
Feeling better, there you go, feeling better.
Good, good is all the matter of the...
Okay, you ready for our budget session and pupil teacher ratio?
Yes, sir, right. Okay, the financial report is through the end of March, it's our 75% time of the year. We are at a net income of $6,402,000. Last year at this time, we had a net income of $4,782,000, so we're in better position, basically due to the additional revenues that came in on growth, and because of the sales tax and property tax, which I'll go over with you next. Sales tax collections are up $803,000 up through March, which is excellent. The economy is doing very well in Murfreesboro and Rutherford County, and property taxes are up right at $400,000, so that also is good. That's based on the growth and the additional people who moved in. So, revenue-wise, we're at almost 82% of our projected revenue, so we'll be, we'll be over 100% of projected revenues before we're done for the year, which is, which is a good thing. On the expenditure side, every category looks really good at this point. We're at, we've spent 67.7%, which is always good to be under the 75, so we're feeling budgetarily, we're doing, doing what we need to be doing for right now, and thank goodness for the additional growth money and the sales and property tax increase to help offset the fund balance that you had agreed to spend, fund the budget last year. So we'll be able to not use as much of that fund balance, which is always a good thing. Does anyone have any questions on the financial? There's...
Not personnel, but pupil teacher.
Okay.
You know what I'm trying to say.
Alright, the pupil teacher report, we grew another 15 students this particular month, and the month ended on April 11th, and it's the end of accounting period seven for student attendance. We are up 382 students over last year, from the end of last year, so that's a really good growth figure. Our number of pupil teacher ratio for K through 3 is 19.01, and our 4 through 6 ratio is 21.52 for an average ratio of 19.89, which is really good, as you know. And happy to say again that our attendance rate is up to 98% again, so we like to, like to keep it above the 95% figure, we've been doing very well, hitting 96s, 97s, and 98s. So, that's where we are.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Phillips?
I was curious, where is most of the growth, those 300 and something kids?
Well, where we're getting it is on the west side and up in the area by Pittard, in that area, so it's kinda, kinda like on a triangle, I mean, on an angle through the city.
On an angle through the city, okay.
Other questions? Anything else to come before our board tonight, Mr. Barrett?
Just an acknowledgement, I had a chance to get over to the Transportation Department and meet with our supervisor of transportation, Ava Jordan, and I did just a visit, and I got to ride a school bus, so I wanted to give a shout out to bus driver 556, Deidre Elliott, and the bus assistant, Rochelle Greer, and the assistant supervisor, Brian Rome, he was also there, and I, so I got to visit with him and ride the bus. But she said, "Come on over," she opened invitation to all the board members, "Go take a ride on the bus." It was amazing what they do to get that bus ready in the morning, inspection, and it was just the pride they took in riding, driving those buses and taking care of for those kids, it was just, it was great to see. So I encourage you all to try to get over there.
Okay. Any other business? Ms. Phillips, I mean, Ms. Rehneer?
We didn't touch on the, what am I trying to say, personnel report, and there are, there's a fifth, a third. The persons that were hired for interims are not the same as what we needed to fill, well, maybe I'm completely wrong, leave of absence. And then we have, obviously, principal, we're not gonna worry about that, kindergarten, fifth, third, and fourth, but then the interims filling them are fifth kindergarten and sixth, not third and fourth. What does that mean?
For leave of absence is an interim, sometimes we, a person goes on leave of absence for the board report of last month, and we do not fill it until this month, but from this point forward to the end of the school year, there are less than 20 days in the school year, so we really do not have to get an interim for that position if somebody goes on leave of absence.
You're doing substitutes for those days?
Yes, ma'am.
The same sub for all 20 days?
Hopefully.
Yeah, hopefully. Speaking of, I had someone ask me this question. What is the state requirement, and there's something about 20 days if a licensed person is off on leave, for instance maternity leave, and they still have enough sick days, does that not have something to do with the rate of pay?
No, ma'am, we changed that policy about four or five years ago, we do not, because it was harder to get good interims.
Right.
Depending on what, how many sick days that regular teacher has.
Okay.
If a, if a teacher goes out on leave of absence, the interim gets subpay for the first 20 days.
Right.
And then they get teacher pay for the remainder of the interim.
Okay, that's, I had a question about that, and I wasn't sure how to answer it. Okay, thank you, subpay for 20?
Except for full-year interims, and they start out with teacher pay.
But that's only if they're certified to teach, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, comments? Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, second. All in favor? Thank you, have a good evening.